Welcome to the city of Battle Creek, Michigan. And the Battle Creek City Commission meeting for July 15th, 2025. It is seven o'clock PM. We welcome you to our city commission meeting. We're going to start a meeting by calling upon Chris Simmons to lead us in the pledge after our invocation. If you're able to stand, please do so now for a moment of silence before our invocation.
Commissioner Chris Simmons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner Simmons. Next item on our agenda is roll call. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kudarski's desk here. Commissioner LaCoss?
Present.
Commissioner Lance?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Mayor Banky?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia?
Here.
You have a series of beautiful Battle Creek awards. Ted, are you going to announce them and then Commissioner Carla Reynolds will pass them out.
Okay, thank you Mayor. Yes, we have three beautiful Battle Creek awards this evening. In NPC one, Ward two, we have a nomination for Dairy Queen at 283 Main Street. In NPC 11, Ward five, we have a nomination for the Battle Creek Country Club at 318 Country Club Drive. And then finally, NPC one, Ward two nomination for Willie and Joni Wetson at 58 Bennett Street.
That's how we get them done, but?
You lost me at Dairy Queen, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Those are three very well deserved beautiful Battle Creek awards and we'll get them to the recipients. Next item on our agenda is a presentation and this is one that we've been waiting for for a little while. And we can add raccoons. Had a complaint this week about raccoons, so I'm going to call upon Ted Deering who's been working with the...
Thank you Mayor. Yes, so we've had some inquiries from Commissioners about deer management in Battle Creek. This is an issue that has come up on a number of occasions over the past several years.
I'm sorry, I was going to...
Oh yeah. Mayor, I believe we may have missed a proclamation on the agenda?
I thought that one is, I thought I have to deliver that, but I apologize.
Yeah, I don't know if we...
Is she still here? All right, let's bring her on. I'm sorry, I thought I had...
It didn't get its own...
This is a program we've been giving off for a number of years. Learning, ready management, survival, inclusion, high quality summer program, and supporting young people. And whereas, high quality summer learning opportunities allow youth to build lifelong social emotional learning skills and return to school ready to learn in the fall. And whereas, youth leadership and employment programs provide young people with real world skills, mentorship, and meaningful opportunities to shape their futures and contribute to the communities. And whereas, community partners including schools, nonprofits, libraries, businesses, and youth themselves are innovating to ensure all young people can access enriching, affirming, and culturally responsive summer experiences. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Battle Creek, we do hereby proclaim July 18th as National Day of Summer Learning in Battle Creek area and commend this observance to all the neighbors and encourage Battle Creek youth to seek summer learning and enrichment opportunities. Would you like to share with us just some of the challenges that you've had this summer?
Hi guys, so my name is Joy, I work with Kid Network and we put on National Day of Summer Learning every year. During the school year, we work with the adults that work with the youth in out of school time program. That's after school programming as well as summer programming. I brought a couple of our youth out with us today and they are going to just tell you why they think summer learning is important.
I think summer learning is important because like, I play sports like, on the offseason I'm always practicing and stuff. So like, if summer, like summer school, it helps my mind in the offseason of school.
Good job.
I think, I think summer learning is cool because after school, you start to forget things after a gap of time, so summer learning keeps your mind fresh for the next year of school.
I'm going to do my best to stop by. Is it this Friday?
Yes.
All right. I know that there's a lot of people that attend this.
This Friday, at CW Post Field from 11 to 3, we'd love to have you all here. It's a community event, we're our kids, we're our stuff, we'd love to have you.
And it's going to be hot, so.
It is.
Thank you very much, I'm very sorry. Ted, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so we were talking about deer management, it's an issue that has come up in the community over the years. And just recently I had an opportunity to connect with Randy Hines who is here this evening. He's a wildlife biologist with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. He's got a presentation, talk to us a little bit about what deer management might look like in Calhoun County. Let me turn it over to you Randy.
Thanks for having me and again, my name's Randy Hinesy, I'm the wildlife biologist for Eaton, Calhoun, and Berry County. I'm bringing this presentation, the presentation was originally from our deer specialist Chad Stewart. The presentation normally is 30 to 40 minutes long, I've tried to condense this into a very short slide, try to keep it under the 10 minute timeline. So I'm going to kind of go through it pretty quickly and then hopefully if there's any questions, I can help provide information afterwards. So typical characteristics of urban deer, the population, there's a high survival rate because there's just not a lot of mortality other than maybe car deer accidents inside city limits. They have a very small home range because of the condensed space, they'll utilize that space and they tend to be very big home bodies. There is typically a little ingress egress from outside areas, just depending on the situation and the habitat types. And they maintain a pretty high reproductive rate in these areas, they tend to be fairly low stressed and there tends to be a lot of food and forage for them. There was a study done on George Reserve, I believe it was Illinois', and they took a two mile square area that was basically enclosed completely by urban areas, so there was nowhere for deer to go. And they had six deer that were released in the area and in seven years, there was about 220 deer. This is evident in this growth curves. Deer have an exponential growth curve. Once a population hits a certain threshold, they, the population grows exponentially very fast until it hits a biological carrying capacity, which basically they're out of room to have fawns, they run out of food sources, something like that. That is an extremely high deer density and it's extremely hard to get them back down into that B area where, once they get up over that hump, you have to remove large amounts of deer. In that study, I believe they had to remove around 50 to 60% of the population to get it down to that B area. So the other thing about urban deer, you know, our landscape is changing, right? So you know, our people numbers have went up. This is an area in southern Michigan in 1999, this is what it looks like in 2008. This is not unusual across southern Michigan, so these types of conflicts continue to increase. We talked a little bit about biological carrying capacity, that can be very high, there's always a few limits on that, it's basically how much food, how much space they have to reproduce in and other than, you know, maybe a disease or anything that comes through and wipes them out because of the high density, you know, that carrying capacity can be very large. The social carrying capacity is basically what people will accept. And when you start seeing large amounts of crop damage, tons of, you know, car deer accidents, deer eating from feeders, wiping out forest floors of all regeneration, people conflicts of deer being basically not afraid of them, chasing them, eating any herbaceous shrubbery around, you know, landscaping, you know, flower beds, vegetables in their garden, all these things can be huge issues when you get to that social carrying capacity. That is except, basically when people won't accept the damage anymore. So what are our management options? You can do nothing, you know, that doesn't cost anybody anything except for maybe the landowners who are experiencing damage. You may continue to get complaints. If there's huge issues, obviously those probably aren't going away anytime soon. It doesn't cause a lot of controversy other than those folks that may be complaining. So there's some pros and cons to both of this. Some non-lethal options, one is exclusion, exclusions can work, they're not always super popular with landowners. A lot of times we'll tell people that are trying to grow a garden or something, you know, small, a small orchard in areas of high deer density to put a six to eight foot fence around there. They don't like paying for it, they don't like the labor of putting it in and they don't like looking at it, but if you want to grow it in that high deer density area without bringing the deer numbers down, that's really about your only option. There are some repellents, you can spray on things. They don't work very long and they're very costly. So every time it rains, you basically got to go out and reapply it. So if you get a summer like this, summer where it's raining every third day, this is not going to be a very good option and most people don't like to have to put the time and energy and money into it. There is some coverings you can put over things, but most of the time like your flowers, you know, that may work for vegetable crops, but maybe like garden, your flower beds and things like that, they're there to be decorative and people don't want netting or material over them to keep deer out of them. One of the things that's not on his list is I recommend when people call, there is lists of plants that deer do not like to eat, most, you know, like barberry and some of these decorative plants that taste bad. And I always strongly recommend that they refer to that planting list and use those in high deer density areas, they're going to be a lot less likely to have deer mowing on them and into destroying their plants, so. Trapping removal, it's really not an option. It comes up, so I brought it, you know, I added, I kept it in the slide, a lot of times I go, just trap them and take them somewhere else. Well, one, we don't allow transporting them. Two, you can't really take them anywhere in Michigan where there's not already good deer numbers or high deer densities. There is a risk of transporting chronic wasting disease in the state of Michigan, which is why we don't allow it. And then two, it's super, anytime you capture and release animals like that, it is very stressful on the animal and it's very expensive and very time consuming. Counterseptives and sterilization come up a lot. These work in pen facilities, but in a wild population, they are just simply not feasible. You would have to treat an animal with a contraceptive every month, you have to treat the same animal every month for multiple months in a row to get that animal not to reproduce and miss its cycle, its life cycle, which is usually in the fall. Sterilization, you would have to dart an animal, sedate it, go in and do what you would do on a pet where you basically remove the ovaries or reproductive tracts and that's super expensive, time consuming. And there's, it's still, neither one of these reduce the deer numbers because that population, if it's overpopulated, it's still overpopulated when you're done. So they're not really bringing the numbers down and because you have ingress and egress in most areas, there's no guarantee that those sterilized animals are going to stay in that landscape. They may go out and you may get a new animal in. Sharpshooting, sharpshooting can be very effective. It is very expensive. Some folks have used a USDA sharpshooting program, they have sharpshooters that you can hire and go out and remove animals from locations. In my opinion, it usually works best in certain isolated areas where maybe hunting isn't an option. The city of Marshall has used their own law enforcement department to do this, I've issued them permits and they've went in and done isolated targeted nighttime shooting in groups of deer where they're eventually having problems, but there's simply no other access points. They lure them in in the winter time to like a park, you know, maybe in February and things are cold and there's nobody using it, they shoot them. As law enforcement agents, you know, they're very safe, they know there's nobody better trained to use firearms and then they donate the meat usually to needy families in the areas, all the animals are getting utilized, which is usually a very popular, anytime with removals, it's always popular, the meat is always utilized, it's not socially accepted by most people to be wasteful with the animal.
So Marshall is shooting them? They're not using bow and arrow?
So they also have, they have both, they have, Marshall has a hunting program as well as a sharpshooting program. They only initiate the sharpshooting program when they have deer in areas that their hunter program can't access. Their hunter program is essentially they've used some of the brown space or commercial areas, they've went out and I think it's their, don't quote me on this, but I think it's their sheriff's department that's done this, they've organized the program, went to some of these landowners and basically asked them if they could implement a hunting program on there. It's archery only, from tree stand only, and they have to harvest any deer they see. If they suspect that somebody is being selective about what they're shooting and trophy hunting, then they kick them out of the program. And they usually use, it's not just general people from the public, normally they're using people either that they know or from the community that, you know, are, you know, that they trust to be able to do this safely. The pros are, you know, definitely, you know, hunting is somewhat accepted already in the state of Michigan, we already have seasons for this. Other than if you get into maybe some park type situations where people are using the park a lot in the fall, then sometimes, some cities have asked for an exemption to be able to shoot into January with those hunting programs, a special season, so they can hunt during times when the park isn't being utilized. See if I just hit any of those? And then, it does provide an opportunity, one of the things that is lacking in the state of Michigan is opportunities for hunters to get into places to hunt and, you know, private property can be very expensive if you don't own, if you don't, you either have to purchase it or lease it and most of those hunting parcels are all locked up, it's very hard to get access to them. I brought this slide, I just wanted to kind of reference, I don't know the city of Battle Creek like the back of my hand, but just as a biologist looking at an aerial photo, in these areas of red, I would suspect are very good deer habitat areas that could hold a lot of deer. And then if you think about that for a second, the deer are going to naturally migrate from one to the next, so the areas of residency between those are likely to be some of those high damage, I'd put them in a high risk area for damage. And one of the complaints that I've gotten, I'll get a few complaints from the residents from the city of Battle Creek, is between these areas and if you look at it, it was just like that perfect corridor and the deer were just, you could tell they were probably going back and forth through his property and everything he's got. These also, you know, can be areas where they simply live in them and they just go out in these residential areas and there's all these really nice plants because nobody really thought about what I was planting before I did it and they're a bunch of hostas and things that are very palatable to deer and unfortunately they're utilizing that very heavily and once they learn that. Another quick thing I'll throw out there that I didn't have in this, we have noticed some deer naturally migrating to these areas, so if there, there's no hunting in some of these zones, animals will be known to find this as a safety zone. We had a collared deer that would travel 22 miles every fall just before the hunting season, she stayed the, sorry, she stayed the winter in the Kalamazoo Nature Center before they allowed hunting and in the spring, she would migrate back and have her fawns in the same place she did and I'm sure that she was then teaching those fawns to do the same. So when they find areas of safety and refuge, you not only have the population that was growing there, but you may have deer that are being pushed into there from surrounding areas where hunting is allowed. So by allowing hunting in some of these, some of these areas, you might be able to bring the numbers down, but you also may be able to take away some of them safety zones and maybe push some of them deer back out of the city limits. So with that, any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Patrick?
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, the other morning, out driving, saw deer with, actually four fawns with it down by Figgs downtown, just walking down the street, person in my car goes, oh my gosh, I can't believe we have deer in Battle Creek. And I'm like, they're everywhere. So it was, it was, to this person with me, they were kind of taken aback, they didn't realize that there was, I know they are because I've seen them, but yeah, it's just surprising where they show up, they're just walking right in the middle of the road like an animal, a dog, you know?
And that four fawn scenario is just, that is an unnatural reproductive rate for deer. Deer should have one fawn and they shouldn't have a fawn until they're two and a half years old. And I equate southern Michigan reproductive, deer reproductive system, kind of like putting nitrous in a car. That is a supercharged system in southern Michigan because of all of the nutrients they get, they're extremely fat, they're extremely healthy, and 30% of our does are being bred as a fawn. So they're born in the spring, they're getting, they're becoming reproductive, actively reproducing that next spring, so they're getting bred that fall and then having a fawn for the first time that spring. And two and three year old does are having twins, triplets, and quadruplets. And that's that growth.
Yeah, it was amazing, I mean, thank you.
Chris Simmons?
First of all, thank you for coming in. A couple of the Commissioners actually joined me in requesting this presentation because it has become a problem. When you showed the map and the two blobs that are Amingus Riverside area north of I-94, there is, has, I think it's hit the top of the curve in that area. The residents, I continually get calls of complaints of the destruction of a habit, of landscaping. I had a constituent on Hamilton where a herd went onto her pool, tore the cover up and thrashing around, did about $10,000 in damage on her liner. Car deer accidents are huge. There's usually, especially in the winter time, there's not a week that goes by, I don't have one killed on the block in front of my house. I have a doe, we mentioned that they bed down in areas that are safe. She stays every summer in, with her, with her fawns, usually it's twins, and behind my house, I haven't been able to grow a garden in several years because they just decimate that. So I think this is something that we all seriously need to consider and you're right, it's controversial, when you're saying we're going to actually dispatch of many of these creatures, they're beautiful, I get it. But the property damage, the safety, and you mentioned the chronic wasting disease, the health concerns, I have a lot of people complaining about ticks lately and they're a bearer of those and can spread those, Lyme diseases on uptick and I think this, the increasing deer population is part of that. So I hope we consider, I like Marshall's model of doing a little of both of those, a couple of those different options and I think we have the ability to do that within certain areas of Battle Creek. So I hope we can all seriously consider this. I'm supportive of doing something.
Any other questions? Commissioner LaCoss?
I'm just curious, I know that you said that the meat is donated, but what about the antlers?
The antlers? It depends if, you know, in the hunting situation, like so when they hunt, they get to keep the antlers. Sharpshooting, usually they basically have to, a lot of times we've collected the heads and sent them to our lab just for random sampling, but they're supposed to just discard. If you're shooting them out of season, a lot of times like, sharpshooting's happening in February and January, there's no antlers on them.
Okay.
But they're not concerned, like, so if you were worried about like depopulation, you'd be specifically targeting, you know, you know, just to bring the numbers, targeting does down, you know, for maybe like crop damage protection, but in this situation, you're just killing as many deer as possible and you don't really care if they're male or female, you obviously want to get the female numbers down, but in that time of year, you're just shooting as many as you can. And I think what you talked about a little bit on that southern part, there may be opportunities, even if there's not hunting opportunity there, like in February, if you've got a, you know, like city of Portage has a lot of agricultural areas that are mixed inside of city limits, some of those places might be great places where you could, potentially we can write a permit to bait and draw them into a spot and then shoot as many as you can from that location. So those might be places.
You had mentioned that, you know, if someone was caught trophy hunting, that they'd be kicked out, wouldn't eliminating the ability for them to take the antlers kind of help with that?
You can, I mean, you can set any stipulations you want, you can make it a doe only hunt if you want to. I mean, the organization aspect is the tough thing, right? So how do you know what they're hunting or what they're shooting? You know, they're supposed to be reporting, they're supposed to be reporting in what they get. I don't know all the intricacies of what the city of Marshall's doing, I know, I'm pretty sure it's run by their police department and I, I'm not so sure that maybe some of them aren't law enforcement or city employees that are participating in trying to get those numbers down.
Gotcha. Also, I know that you said that, you know, that you guys ask the homeowners to hunt on their property. Is there a way to compel them to allow actual residents to possibly hunt on their property, the ones that don't already have hunters on place there to also manage that and then give residents a chance, maybe like with a lottery system or something like that?
Yeah, they do that, I think, in Meridian Township in Lansing and yes, there is, there is some, or, you know, again, it's all organization, somebody has to put this together, department doesn't do it. But yeah, you can basically put up a program like that together. Pierce Cedar Creek Institute also runs a similar program where you basically get on list, a waiting list, and you know, they probably have some type of interview and maybe if you wanted to, you can have a proficiency test, but it's all, with Pierce, I think it's gun or bow, but with like most of these townships and cities, it's usually strictly archery equipment, there's just no good safety, you know, safe place to be discharging firearms in those areas.
Right.
Any resident, as far as like hunting your own property, any resident can archery hunt their own property, there's no size limit. The only restriction is depending on what the city has for a discharge regulation. So if it's a no firearm discharge, most of the time you can use archery equipment in those areas and there's no safety zone for archery hunting. So you can shoot a bow and arrow next to, you know, somebody else's house where hunting with a firearm has a 450 safety zone restriction. If the city has a no projectile rule, then you can't shoot a slingshot, a BB gun, you know, like a bow and arrow, anything like that. So it depends a lot on how your laws are written for the city, inside city limits.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your presentation.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Next item on our agenda is the chair noting any added or deleted resolutions?
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is petitions, communications, and reports.
There were none.
Ted?
Yes, we have a, we have a public hearing next on the agenda, Mayor.
Okay, there's no public, oh, there's, all right, I see it now. All right, next item on our agenda is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing to receive comment on an application to conditionally rezone five parcels to the south of West Columbia Avenue and between South Helmer Road to the east and Stone Jug Road to the west.
We'll declare the public hearing open and at this period of time, if you'd like to make a public comment on the subject of this public hearing, then please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to come forward to the podium where you'll have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and your address before making your comment. Are there any public comments at this time? Are there any public comments? We'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any remaining agenda items. This is a reminder to all residents that as stated in the commission rules, members of the public may not pass the commission chambers bar unless invited to do so by the presiding member or after requesting explicitly being granted permission to do so. Violators will be ruled out of order and may be required to leave the meeting or be subject to arrest. We respectfully request that you adhere to the rules of procedure. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any remaining agenda items, please raise your hand and we will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before beginning your comment and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. Are there any public comments at this time? Yes, Autumn Smith?
Autumn Smith, I'm speaking on 191 regarding the city manager, a closed session you guys are supposed to go into. I would like to know whatever happened, I know that we had set up previously this spring a meet and greet with the candidates and there was word that one of them dropped out. That left two viable candidates for city manager. Why are we not, why do we not move forward with that? How much money did we waste with that? What are we doing about that? What was the reason to not move forward? Why is this, I feel this has happened over and over again in the previous times. You guys put up a smokescreen of this illusion that you're looking for people and then you end up hiring from within, wasting money. You did it with the former police chief, you guys have done it with previous city managers and stuff like that. So what was wrong? Because basically the way you guys put it is you had the final three, Nate Henny, Springfield city manager, he dropped out at the last minute and then you guys just canceled the whole thing. That's like, kind of like a Miss America pageant, getting down to the final three and then, you know, they call the last, and then there's two and they're like, "Oh, we're not going to crown anybody." We did all this to a final and then we're not going to call a winner and stuff. So how much money have you guys spent on this and how much longer are you guys going to play these, you know, dog and pony shows and waste our taxpayer dollars? If you're going to hire Ted, you should just do it. He's been here for years, that's probably what's going to happen and stuff, and you guys have wasted tons of taxpayer dollars and stuff like that. What was wrong with the other two candidates? That's the thing. Why did you guys keep putting, if they weren't the best of the best, why did you guys let them go to the finals? Why did you mislead the public? Why did you guys want to host a meet and greet and then call it all off? Because Nate Henny decided to drop out, which tells me that he was your go-to guy, he was the closest one, most local guy, closest insider, and then he drops out and you guys called the whole thing off. It's just really interesting. I'd like to know what was going on and why all of a sudden, you know, we're doing this all over again, how much money are we wasting? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments at this time? See none? We'll move on to adoption of ordinance. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This ordinance seeks to conditionally rezone five parcels to the south of West Columbia Avenue and between South Helmer Road to the east and Stone Jug Road to the west. The intent of the applicant is to establish a mix of employment generating light industrial development, single and multifamily residential housing, and open space intended as a natural buffer. While no specific development is currently planned or under contract, additional rezone is intended to position the site to attract and guide appropriate investment in alignment with the City of Battle Creek master plan.
Move to adopt ordinance 062025?
Support.
It's a move to adopt ordinance 062025. There are any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on the adoption of ordinance 062025? Ordinance 062025 has been approved. Next comment, next item on our agenda is commission comment regarding meeting business?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
It's a move and supported to approve the consent agenda. Is there any comment by the commission? Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to say, thank you for getting the agreement here with Kellogg Community College's baseball to play out at Bailey Park. They're nationally ranked and it's nice to have that facility out there to support our local baseball and give us a good look at the, our city about how we support our teams at the college. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Lacoste?
I just wanted to point out that, you know, during the city manager process, Ted's been very gracious in staying with us. I know he had planned on retiring in April and we thank him very much for sticking around and helping us out as long as he has because he could have easily went along with his retirement as he had planned. So, thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Commissioner Lacoste. Are there any other commission comments? Seeing none, would you please vote on the consent agenda? The consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution 190. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to write off the March 9, 2000 promissory note with neighborhoods incorporated in the amount of $20,000 for six vacant properties on Maple Court.
Move to approve resolution 190?
Support.
So moved and supported to approve resolution 190. Are there any comments by the commission? Commissioner Lacoste?
I know the answer to this already, but I just wanted to clarify for everyone else. Ted, if you can answer kind of what they plan on doing with these properties.
Yeah, and so obviously this dates back quite a while to the initial potential development that was going to occur back in the early 2000s. The intent back then had been to damage, or excuse me, to demolish some older properties that were functionally obsolete and then to sell some of the property after the demolition to the surrounding neighbors. There was a lot of interest at that time. Unfortunately, the neighborhoods turned over over the course of time before the project was finished and unfortunately there wasn't interest going forward at that time. And so this, this has been out there for quite a while. We've had conversations with neighborhoods about ways to potentially develop this particular space. There've been a couple of different plans at different times. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to come to fruition and neighborhoods struggled a little bit in, in past years as well and wasn't in a position financially to do the development. We feel better about where neighborhoods is at these days, they're a stronger organization and they do want to get back into, I think, acquisition, development, and rehab. And there's opportunities here for, and we've even talked, for example, about maybe a tiny home development back in this space. So neighborhoods has owned this property and maintained it and paid taxes on it for the past 20 years, so it makes sense for them to retain it. You know, we're being generous here, I think, in forgiving the $20,000 because that's a financial burden for neighborhood, but we do need to continue to work with them to see if we can't come up with something that makes sense for development going forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I looked at this and I understand it, but, you know, my concern is we're saying they're uncollectible. I mean, I'm a lawyer, I sue people unfortunately quite a times. I'm pretty sure neighborhoods is not uncollectible. I'm going to vote no on it. I get why we're writing it off, but I'm still going to vote no on it. When we start choosing winners and losers, when we're going to start writing things off, particularly knowing that some citizens are being pursued in this city that have questionable collectability, I have concerns. So I would vote no on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution 190? Resolution 190 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution 191. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution sets a closed session immediately following commission comments at the regular city commission meeting on Tuesday, July 15, 2025, to review and consider the contents of applications for the position of Battle Creek city manager for the applicants who have requested confidentiality.
Move to approve resolution 191?
Support.
So moved and supported to approve resolution 191. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you, Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the public know that we, as the city commission, are doing our best to pick a good city manager. Going through the process may seem difficult and changed out there to people out there that are seeing this from the outside. We didn't want to set up a special committee and hide behind that, we're doing our job. And yes, it may take a couple rounds or something, but we're doing what we do see is the best way to go forward financially, but also to make sure that we have the right choice. Currently now, it's hard to find a city manager in the state, the whole country. Everyone's looking for them right now. And when things happen, they're for a reason, some of it for confidentiality. And there's a lot of that going on, like this evening where we go over our applications. But I believe in all these people up here that we could come together. We've done a very good job so far. I thank you all for doing this to make sure that we choose the right choice for Battle Creek. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. Any other comments? Yes?
I just wanted to piggyback off that, you know, this is going to be arguably the most important decision that we make up here as commissioners and I think that going with this other firm has done, you know, they've done a great job in choosing candidates, potential candidates for us. We have been spending a lot of time thoroughly investigating their backgrounds and that's why it takes a lot of time, but I'm very happy with the choices that we have thus far.
Yeah, and I just wanted to echo the same thing that, you know, we're just trying to do our due diligence and make sure that we're going to find somebody that's going to be a great fit for Battle Creek in our community and that's not, not an easy task, it would seem. So, you know, we're just trying to do the best that we can and hope you make a right choice and that's, that's important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commission comments? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution 191? Resolution 191 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the city commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address prior to beginning the comment. Are there any public comments at this? Yes. Young lady right here in front?
Mrs. Zakkus.
Mrs. Zakkus, yes. Well, you have to come up to the microphone.
Well, number one, I agree on habitat, okay? I agree that we need places, okay? But what we need to do is we need to step up, okay? You have a lot of properties that are being abandoned, okay? It cost you guys $14,000 to $25,000 to tear that house down, okay? I have contractors that have gone and fixed that house for you, okay? You can take and do a 90-day program and take, there's 15 soldiers down underneath the bridge. I just took one out. I've put five in homes in the last month. I've kept 21 people in their homes, got them six months free rent. I work with troubled teens, I give them a job. I even did, I even did the movie The Bounty Hunter. That's my car. I brought Battle Creek in as a movie, okay? I've done everything in my power to try to help you guys, okay? Because I want us to be better, okay? Kalamazoo is trying to do all kinds of stuff, I don't even care, okay? I want Battle Creek better, okay? I want to be able to stand up here and say to everybody, "I live in Battle Creek and I'm proud of it." Amish people, well, I talk to them, if I get the property, okay, they will put, you know, like the little houses that they make, okay? They'll put as many as I want, charge me $209 a month and that's buying them, okay? So for 12 of them, for $2,400 a month, we can put these houses, you know, they'll bring them, set them right up, okay? And we can put them there, we can do a 90-day program, turn around and help people get their IDs, help them get their social security, help them get their medical papers, their medical, okay? We can help them get a job and a place to live, do a 90-day program there and help people. Instead of tearing these houses down, fix them. Put them in there, do a 90-day program. You'd get half all these people off the street. I go and I pull them off the street and I put them in homes. You can check with the mission, they'll tell you about me, in so much, the women's center, the vets, because I care. And I want to step up here and I don't know how I'm going to do it because I get fought, okay? I want Battle Creek to be better. I want us to be able to hear on the map instead of saying, "Oh, Battle Creek's the most murdered town in the second." And, you know what? I don't care, okay? Do better. Instead of talking about it, do something. And I feel right now that if there's a way, Bedford, I've been talking to Bedford Township, Bedford's looking for property for me, but I'd rather do Battle Creek, okay? I want Battle Creek to be able to say, see how we help people.
Your time's up. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Yes, Doctor?
Good evening, everyone. Allow me to, just Paul Watson, I live most days at 450 North Avenue on campus. I reside in Marshall, Michigan. I really want to thank you for your support in getting this Billy Park lease agreement across the finish line. Especially want to thank Ted Dern, our interim city manager, and also Danielle Merkel, our recreation director here for Parks and Rec, and on our side, Andrew Fleming, for all their work. This community partnership really should be celebrated and really solidifies a venue first to continue to call home. Thank you for your support in making this happen. I do want to brag about our boys on the Kellogg Community College baseball team, so that way you understand the partner that you're getting. This is a program that every year, 35 to 40 students join and recruit to our campus in our community and achieve high academic results. Since 2010, we have actually been awarded an Academic All-American Team 12 times. This is the teams who have a GPA over 3.0 and this spring, just so you're aware, the team posted an impressive 3.40 GPA. This is a program that also has established a footprint in our community as it relates to community service. We have actually established a 20-year partnership with New Level Sports Ministries where our teams serve as mentors for our community's youth and more recently have been volunteering their time with Gray's On Deck, a local group that's founded by KCC Baseball and Battle Creek Central alum Evan Gray, who many of you might know, who runs a youth baseball, softball program here in Battle Creek. And finally, when it comes to competition, I think we're pretty awesome. We have represented the institution and the city on the national level of the NGCA World Series, which includes the last two consecutive seasons. We've twice finished national runner-up and had a fifth place finish this past season. 16 times, we've won our conference championship and it's been 19 consecutive years we've finished a season nationally ranked in the top 25 in the country. By all accounts, this program is a national program and we really enjoy the opportunity to represent the city of Battle Creek and Kellogg Community College on a national stage. Thank you for your support as we continue to support these student athletes on their journey. Thank you.
What a president's supposed to do is talk about the positives. So thank you, congratulations, Paul. I thought I saw Autumn's hand up. Was Autumn, no? No? All right. Reese Atkins, bud?
Good evening, Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. Very good presentation from DNR. As a lot of you know, I come up here and I talk about the food pantry that I work for quite often. This is another situation where I'll be talking about it. We here a couple of months ago, as I went to the food bank to get food for the food pantry, which I do every other week, they had over 17,000 pounds of venison burger that was donated by- that was donated by a group who goes out and shoots them, you know, to bring the competition down. None of them eat it. They donate it to nonprofit organizations. Thank goodness the food bank was one of them, and they gave them to the food pantry who wanted them free of charge. It does help us out because it is amazing how many people that we have that come into the food pantry, and we tell them we have venison burger. How many of them actually take it? I've got two-hundred-and-fifty pounds of it that I got, and I only have maybe fifty pounds left in, in our freezer right now. So that would be a good program that we need, that we could look into to see and, you know, get the meat processed and donate it to the different food pantries and organizations because people out there like it, and we like it when we can get stuff like that at no cost, that we can help the community because it helps the people that are out there starving. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Any other public comment at this time? Autumn Smith.
Good evening, Autumn Smith. I'm speaking today on behalf of many citizens, individuals, parents, and as Chair of the Calhoun County Tea Party and members of the Tea Party, who are deeply troubled by the city's continued decision to fly the pride flag over City Hall. Recently, our group sent a formal communication outlining our concerns. This wasn't a mere expression of disagreement. It was a call for accountability and appeal to common decency. We received no meaningful response. What we received was a clear demonstration of what the courts refer to as deliberate indifference. The flaggy question may have once symbolized inclusion in its most basic sense, but today it is undeniably associated with radical ideologies and increasingly vocal activists who openly promote the normalization of pedophilia under the term minor attracted persons. Some within that movement even advocate for bestiality, necrophilia, and other sexually deviant behaviors. These are not wild accusations. They are verifiable and documented. By knowingly continuing to fly this flag after being informed of these associations, the city has crossed a dangerous line. It is using public property, taxpayer-funded government space to endorse political and sexual ideology. That violates the First Amendment principle of government neutrality. When the government picks sides in a moral and ideological debate, it is no longer acting as a neutral representative of the people. It is acting as a partisan actor, which opens the door to public backlash and potential litigation. Moreover, the city is now on recorded notice. You have been informed. You cannot claim ignorance. That means if any harm comes to a child or vulnerable person due to the normalization of these ideologies, or if this flag is used by a predator or organization as cover, the city could face civil liability under the doctrine of municipal complicity. We are not here to target individuals. We are here to demand that our local government stop endorsing any symbol that promotes sexual politics, especially one increasingly hijacked by groups seeking to erode the age of consent laws and dismantle moral safeguards meant to protect children. We urge you to remove the flag from City Hall immediately. If the city wants to fly a flag representing all residents, then let it be the American flag, the state flag, or even the city's own banner, not a politicized emblem that now carries a dark and destructive association. Silence is not neutrality. Inaction is not tolerance. When a government chooses to ignore moral red flags, it is not being inclusive. It is being irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes. Dean, I'm sorry, Dean, I forgot your first name.
Okay, that's fine. I'm Dean Warden, 223 Martha Drive. Commissioner Simmons represents my area. I have a concern about our residential ordinances or lack thereof. Apparently, when we have new residential construction, there is no ordinance in Battle Creek that speaks to the need to put a lawn in or to improve your property through landscaping of any type, planting of bushes, the use of rock formations, whatever it may be. But we do have such an ordinance for businesses when they're established. So it seems like we've got an imbalance between the business community and the residential community, and I do speak from experience, or I probably wouldn't even be aware of this issue. I have a situation where there was a fire, unfortunately, that, that took the life of one of my long-term neighbors. When the house was replaced, built with a new house, there was the builder, who I spoke with when they were there, had no intention of putting a lawn in or doing any landscaping. That was entirely on the homeowner. The homeowner then came into the neighborhood, bought the house, moved into the home, and now over two, almost three years, has done nothing to the yard at all. There's not a bush, there's not a flower, there's not a rock, as silly as that sounds. There's, there's not anything, no grass planted. Unfortunately, it's taken many complaints to get the, the amount of weeds growing there to be cut down to a, an acceptable level related, I guess that level would be to the noxious weed ordinance that may be in place. But it's definitely impacting the whole neighborhood. It's a neighborhood of nice homes, and here comes a new home, but apparently it went the other way of hurting the neighborhood rather than helping the neighborhood. And as I see ironically, as you talk about this rezoning of these parcels out along Columbia Avenue, theoretically, that could happen there as well. Everybody that came in and went to a new house could choose to do nothing, and you would have a new neighborhood, which is a blight. So I would ask that you consider adopting an ordinance that compels a new homeowner, a new construction only, not an established, but a new construction, that they do something to improve their property and have that property fit within the norm of the community on the immediate neighborhood. So I hope you'll talk about that as time goes on. I'm running out of time. Commissioner Simmons and I have talked about that a little bit, so, and he's told me a little bit about some of your thoughts. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I noticed that neighbor has cut the grass from the last couple days. It, it looks nice right now, but we clearly understand your dilemma, and it's probably going to be up to this Commission whether or not they want to impose upon the entire city that type of ordinance, so.
And just to be clear, it's not grass. It's, it's weeds that have grown up and turned green, and then every month or so it gets knocked down, but then for the month it goes way back up, so, you know, that's what we...
It's cut right now, though. It looks, it looked pretty good Monday morning.
It is. It is cut right now.
Chris, do you want to say anything?
About that? Maybe we could bring the deer in to keep it.
No, there aren't any.
All right. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Commission comments. Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Barb and the balloon committee, that they did a great show last weekend and brought the community together out there at the airport. Our first-ever drone show looked really fabulous. It was great to just see the city spotlighted for over a week, having visitors in town enjoying our amenities, so, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other, yes, Commissioner Lacoste.
I just wanted to say also about the field and flight, that it was a great, great turnout. The drone show was amazing, I thought. It was really good. Also, I wanted to see, Ted, if you have any information for everyone on the smell that's permeating in a certain area of town. I think down by Stringham to Angel, I've had quite a few residents asking me about it.
Yeah, that, that has been an ongoing problem. We have been working not only with the property owner, but with Eagle on this particular issue. So we think that there were a couple of sources there, and one of them had to do with, this is a, this is a facility that does recycle food, and there was food, I think, left outside that needed to be addressed. We have been successful in getting all of that removed, but there's a retainage pond there that had some issues as well. We've gotten the retainage pond cleaned up, but the odor is still lingering somewhat, so we continue to work on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other Commission comments? Seeing none, we're going to recess and come back at some point in time tonight. At least that is our intention. Well, thank you. If you're staying, please stand by.
Motion.
Go back in from, um, return from recess, Commissioner Lands.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion move forward with the city manager hiring process with the candidates as discussed.
Support.
There has been a motion on the floor and support, or are there any comments? If you know comments, would you please vote? That motion does pass. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, you said.
Yeah, you said.